Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the school committee meeting. I'll call it to order. The first order of business is any member wish to speak on anything not related to tonight's agenda? Seeing no one, I will bring something up that I just want to point out that I was disappointed in. I know the superintendent had to send out the email to the community, but I wish we had gotten a little more notice from the G and E about the meters. And maybe we can try to work on that going forward. That was a kind of a problem. I've heard from several people about that, and so I did want to bring that up. So hopefully that I'm glad that's that's still going on, right, Brian?
Yes, they're rolling sort of a they're going street by street.
Okay, so I know you said that.
They are knocking on doors. They're trying to provide the courtesy of warning folks. So their internet just doesn't shut down. So they're doing all they can, but it was something that's been scheduled for a long time. I believe it was pre pandemic. So they had, I don't think they had any way of knowing what was going to happen in the future. So, but, but I agree with you. It's definitely an inconvenience.
Thank you, Brian. Anybody else? Seeing no one, I will turn it over to the two union presidents and Sam and Kate. Welcome.
Thank you. Let's see. So at the high school, well, all over, there's continuous efforts are being made by the teachers to ensure that students remain safe while adhering to the face coverings and physical distancing requirements while in the classroom and during mask breaks. Both the hybrid and remote academy cohorts are progressing nicely. There's still some challenges with student technology, Wi-Fi connectivity issues, student device issues, but we're working through them. Due to the uniqueness of our semester schedule at the high school, many teachers are teaching the fourth blocks. Some resemble that to treading water has been shared and some staff are reporting working upwards of 60 hours and beyond per week just to try to stay a day or two ahead of their students. But the teaching and learning is happening as a direct result of all these extraordinary efforts. And burnout is starting to happen. Teachers are beginning to feel exhausted and kind of over burned out. So, so the stamina is truly being tested these days to stay, to say the very least, with all the teachers teaching this year in school.
Yeah. Kate? Yeah. So let's see what's going on more at the elementary level. We just got out of a over two hour meeting for Middleborough Education Association, our 2023, 25 members coming together and talking about, you know, things that we need to work on, things that are supportive of each other, that sort of thing. That's an improvement over the nearly three hour meeting that we had last month. So thank you to COVID for keeping us very connected with our colleagues. Last night was supposed to be the Henry B. Berkland Virtual Open House. And in typical 2020 fashion, moments before open house went live for Mr. Thompson, the internet went out. So he ran down to the, to the tech department and grabbed a bunch of hotspots and was ready to go. And then the power went out. So that will be rescheduled. We, I was able to get my virtual open house in because that happened from six to 6:30. And I had seven or eight parents come to my open house. And we just transitioned, said goodnight to each other and jumped on Mr. Thompson's call or his, rather, his his presentation when the power went out. And I heard there was even a tree on fire down there. So that's typical 2020 for us. So that will be rescheduled for most of the HBB community. Things are going up great in the complex in terms of teachers are really getting creative about how to do our job in this new reality for us. Technology is still an issue. We talked to some of our colleagues at the middle school who are also having a little bit of technology issues, but we figured out a way of using our projectors, our bright, not our bright links so much, but our, our hover cams, you know, the document cameras. We've figured out a way of using those to record ourselves. You have to 90 degree angle yourself, but it works. So we are using the technology that we can get our hands on while we're waiting for the other, other technology to arrive. I did have one student go out temporarily while her meter was being replaced, but she was back within, it was a really short time. I won't even say it was less than half an hour. So it may seem like a big interruption. She was back soon and had a story to tell. So we are working through things. We are rescheduling. We are making do. We are tired, but we're also getting a lot of support from parents. And I, I got a really nice email after my virtual open house last night from a parent thanking me for, you know, being online all day and then hosting an open house at night. And, and I, I think that's what's keeping us going this year is that we are getting encouraged by our kids. One of my kids today, I like school. That's great. So we're gonna get there. I like, but like Sam said, we are tired, but we know it's temporary. So.
Thanks. Does anyone have any questions for Sam or Kate? Rich?
Thank you both very much for the, the update. And I, I hope you can consider us as your supporters as well, in addition to the parents and that student you mentioned, because we certainly are. I wanted to ask about the Samantha, what you mentioned about the kind of like crazy hours and the, the burnout risk. And, and I wondered, is, do you, do you see this as calmer days ahead? Or, you know, is this building momentum so, so that things will get better? Or does this just feel like how it's gonna be?
That, that's a really good question. Right now, I think people are feeling like it's, it's how it's gonna be for a while. Just trying to get everything up and running for remote slash hybrid, depending on where you're teaching. We hope for better times ahead. We just have to, you know, ride this wave and, and get to the end of it. I mean, we're working on stamina and we're working on, you know, trying to do the best for our students and families of Middleborough. So we're just gonna have to keep going and we, you know, we support each other. We know we have your support, the parent's support. And we just gotta keep going.
Well, thank you for everything you're, you're all doing.
Thank you.
Thank you for your support because it's, it's important in these times.
No, thank you guys for everything that you do. We appreciate it. And thanks to all your members for going through something, A, that no one trained to do, obviously, and B, that no one wants to do if they're given the choice. But unfortunately, as you guys know, it's, that's the choice that we're all given. And we have to sort of abide by the rules that we have to abide by. And I wish it were different, and I think everybody does. But I'm glad you're making the best of it. And, and hopefully, I mean, you know, this week has been a little crazy in the sense that I think we've had two, between the weekend and this week, we've had two good storms that have caused power outages that have sort of wreaked havoc right afterwards in the whole system. And so I think hopefully that will go away for a little while, we hope, and we'll see. But that's problematic. So thank you to both of you. We really appreciate you. And we appreciate you coming and talking like this week. You know, it's good to hear. It's good to have some knowledge of and good to be able to deal. I know there's other members of the committee who work in schools. I don't. So it's good for me to, to hear from you guys and understand what you're going through. So we appreciate it.
Thank you.
So with that, I will move on to the superintendent's report. Mr. Lynch? Oh, excuse me, Greg, you had a question?
No, I just, I had a comment for the, but it's just, I want a second that I'm a teacher at the South Shore Vocational.
They're back, Greg.
It is. Okay. I just wanted to tell you guys, yeah, I mean, I'm also a teacher at the South Shore Votech. And the, the remote teaching has been exhausting. I mean, it's, it's different. You know, you're looking at a screen with, you know, like 15 to 20 kids, whatever it is. You're trying to manage all the different people. And I even had my superintendent pop into my class, you know, so it's like, there you go. So it's, it is challenging and I'm, I'm trying to find ways to make it better for myself, but it's, it is, is a tough situation. So thank you for.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, guys. So Brian, now I'll turn it over to you. Mr. Lynch, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good evening, members of the committee. I'm here tonight to, to go on with my ongoing updates with regard to COVID. As you know, we had some happenings specific to COVID-19 this past week with a individual at the Nichols Middle School who did test positive. I'm happy to report that Paula Magnasco and Heidi Latenda dealt with it very expeditiously. And, and it was, it was something that was our first experience, but we followed all the guidelines. We did everything we were supposed to do. We notified the public as soon as we possibly could. And, and went down and we actually had the Department of Public Health, Middleborough Department of Health come in this week and sort of do a building check and go through with Paula Magnasco and make some recommendations. And we just basically changed out the whole cafeteria to go in a different direction with, with more distance from each other in the cafeteria. So some changes have been made at the Nichols, but the contact tracing went very well. We have seating arrangements in each class. We have seating arrangements in the cafeteria. So we knew exactly where the individual was, where the other individuals that might have had contact with the person identified those folks. They were notified and, and have quarantined the 14 day from the last day in school. So, and happy to report that those, those individuals will report back to the school on Tuesday after this weekend. So we'll go back. So it's our only case thus far. I'm not saying it's gonna be the only, but it's the only one thus far. And, and I'm happy to report that we were able to follow the guidelines. We were able to work with a coordinator of nursing, which we did not have last year, as you know, which has, was paid for by the Escher grant that came through from the federal government. And we're happy to have Paula Magnasco on board. She did a nice job in working with the school and making things work. And I know that the folks frustrated with our inability to let them know exactly who it was or exactly what cohort or exactly what classroom or the individual, in fact. But it's basically that, that individual's right to privacy sort of trumps other people's right to know, if you will. So, and that's the way we treat any individual who's involved in this. So like I said, I, like, people were frustrated and that's the input that I received back from folks was who is it? What cohort? This isn't fair. Why shouldn't we know? This is a big thing. And I realize all of those things, but you need, your folks need to realize, and I put twice in my communication, my email, that it's important that, that we keep that person's name confidential because that's the law. So that's that update on that. I would certainly entertain any questions on that incident if, if anyone has any questions. Teresa, I'm sorry, through you, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Teresa.
No questions, but really just wanted to say I was extremely impressed as a parent at the communication. It was, it was pretty much immediate and it was thorough. And I think that we all have to just encourage everyone who has those questions to reread the, the policy that was put out at the beginning of the school year that, that we took time to put together. And, you know, it comes down to all of those pieces being put there in writing before we opened school. So people would know what the procedure would be. And in my eyes, as a parent, the protocols were followed to the T. So I thought it was very well done and I appreciated it.
Anything else from, through you, Mr. Chair?
Mr. Oakley?
Yeah, thank you very much. It seemed like it was a pretty strict process, follow the protocol. And I think that's the best we can do. I was curious, so we know that we have one, one positive test or just one symptomatic student. But I know that there was contact tracing that went on. Do we have any idea how big the group is that has to quarantine?
Yes, we do.
And, and is that not, can I ask the number or is that hidden?
I'd rather not discuss numbers if we can, if we can avoid that. But all of those individuals were notified by the Department of Public Health and have been quarantined.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions? So I do want to say thank you to Brian. From my perspective, Brian and I met pretty much as soon as he told me about it, I reached out to the school committee to let them know what was happening. And I was able to witness, for example, the public health nurse had gone for the day for the, for the town's Board of Health, but had come back to make the contact tracing calls and went out of our way to communicate with our leader of nursing. It was, it was great to see the cooperation around the clock. And I couldn't agree with Brian more. Heidi did a fantastic job. And so I appreciate everything that was done and done by, as Teresa said, by the outline that was established, was published, was put out, and very thankful for all that. Even more thankful knowing, for example, the work that Hutch and his crew did immediately afterwards to sort of make sure that everything was touched and taken care of. And so I think all in all, people did a really good job.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Moving on, I just wanted to talk a little bit about that sanitation. It was put out in our general procedures for regular cleaning, sanitizing and disinfecting in our guidebook. But I just want to remind folks that what goes on in our schools every day and all of our middle public schools are, are clean, sanitized, disinfected daily slash nightly. This includes all custodial staff members disinfecting throughout the school day. All portions of the building, including all surfaces of the classroom. It includes counters, tables, desks, chairs, furniture floors, hallways, doorknobs, banisters, bathrooms, sinks, offices, entry and exits to the building and floors are cleaned and disinfected. We use EPA registered disinfectants and sanitizers and no cleaning agents are prepared in the proximity of children. It's all mixed at night and getting ready for the day. All sanitizing and disinfecting solutions are labeled properly to their contents. The inventory is overseen by our Director of Facilities, Jim Hutchinson, who also has helped develop this plan. All of our classrooms are equipped with EPA registered cleaners, odorizers and disinfectants for staff to utilize if needed. There's a 32 ounce bottle in each classroom of hand sanitizer. That was originally a gallon, but the fire department said that is probably a fire hazard. So we reduced and we identified some 32 ounce bottles that we're using. All school entrances are equipped with a freestanding touchless hand sanitizer dispensers. Classrooms, gymnasiums, auditoriums and cafeterias have wall mounted dispensers. All hand sanitizers would have at least 60% alcohol and custodial staff monitor these on a daily basis. Custodial staff are also equipped with electrostatic sprayers. We have three in each building. And that's done throughout the day and done at night especially. We also had air quality checks prior to the beginning of the school year. Everything checked out fine. And then we, as a matter of course, as seasons change, which they just did with September 21st, have our air quality checked again with students in the building. And that's a better, more accurate test. And those tests were all, we did very well on those tests. So nothing came back was a negative. No room was identified as, as being anything but quality air everywhere in the building. So that's sort of the sanitation process we go through and continue to go through. And it happens on a daily basis and a nightly basis, and that will continue. So that's sort of that sanitation process. I can, you know, Hutch was going to join us tonight, but he is installing a sink that was defective at the Nichols Middle School in the, in the ladies bathroom. And that's where he is right now. And he started this morning, probably his day at 5:30 AM, and it's almost 7:30 now. And he's still installing the sink. So I just want to thank him for all his hard work. Got a call from him. There were a couple of people walking on the track this weekend on a Sunday. And how did he know that? Well, he was, he was driving around checking our building. So, and he had worked eight hours on Saturday with Scotty Beach, our electrician. So, you know, he continues to be a dedicated, devoted director of facilities. And I don't think we can do any better than having Jim Hutchinson in that position. So kudos to him and, and his staff for cleaning and maintaining our buildings and making sure they're safe for everyone that walks in and out of that building. So I can answer any questions on that sanitation process at this point?
So Brian, one question that came through in the chat, which is a good question. I thought we've heard before. If a student has to quarantine due to being in close proximity, will they be able to attend school remotely or are they counted as absent?
No, they are able to tune in remotely.
Thank you. That's great. I'm glad we can answer that.
If a student, elementary level, that becomes that more of a problem with, with the, at the middle school, it's, it's an easier problem to solve. High school's a medium problem, but the elementary, there'll be days when we're in class and days when we're out of school. So we haven't run into that yet and we'll, we're gonna talk with the elementary folks about how we're gonna handle that. Because at the middle school, there's a remote class in every team. And the teachers rotate through and that team is seen. So if any of those members of that, those student numbers are home, they can always hop onto the remote and get the same lessons they would get if they were in school. At the elementary level, they might be in two and out three, and they might miss those two days of in school. So there might be work provided for them. Because as you know, we agreed that we, we're not filming teachers and we're not broadcasting teachers from the, from the schools with our agreement with the Middleborough Education Association. So that is something that I need to discuss with the elementary and thank you for bringing it up because I'll put it on my list to do tomorrow is to have that discussion. And we'll, we have an administrative meeting next Wednesday and it'll be on the agenda. But I want to talk to them prior to that, how we're gonna handle that. I'm pretty sure that our folks at the elementary level have already have a plan for this, but I have not discussed it with them with regard to answering that question this evening, and I don't want to make anything up.
Thanks, Brian. Does anyone have any questions about the sanitation or anything to do with that with the school?
So, so I just did summary, I guess, and I thank Sam and Katie for their honest appraisal. You know, whenever a unit event goes down, it gets fixed, usually overnight or usually right away when that room is emptied. Any type of incident that happens during the day with regard to sanitation is addressed almost immediately by our crew. We have a great maintenance staff and a great custodial staff. So I just think that that needs to be pointed out that we'll continue to do that. And because the safety of our students, of our teachers, of our staff, of everyone is vitally important, obviously, as we move through this process. And the cleaner we are, the less likely are we are to spread any type of virus. So thank you for that. Next on my report this evening is the technology, technology update. The technology loan update, and I would ask that Dr. Gates be pulled into the conversation to sort of just give us an update on the loan program. And Dr. Gates is there. I see her. So Dr. Gates, welcome.
Welcome, Dr. Gates.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you Superintendent Lynch and committee members. It's been a busy beginning to the start of the school year. And I'm really appreciative of the patience and support of the community as we adjusted our plans from the delivery of 2,000 new devices to the rekindling and refurbishing of many of the five to seven year old devices here in district to use to support our families and our students as best we can during this interesting time in education. So as it stands to date, we have given out about 1,600 devices across the district. As you all know, we've been one to one at the secondary level for, I believe, five years now. So we had started with those kids getting their devices back since they were previously assigned to them. And our, our teachers and families were accustomed to children, their children having those devices available. Many, many families helped out with the Bring Your Own Device program where they were allowing their children to use their personal devices to support their learning for school. And we're really truly appreciative of that support because it allowed us to distribute more devices at the elementary level, to which we've given out approximately 500 devices at the elementary. We are continuing to give out, collect back, repair devices. We've been just still in that full out device mode. Thankfully, Mr. Sean Siciliano and the whole entire tech department, but Sean has really stepped up huge to make sure that families that are having an issue with the device, that we're able to swap it out so that we can do our necessary repairs. But it's certainly challenging to take devices that are, you know, a, a lower end device and aged anywhere from five to seven years old and make those viable with the demands with virtual learning. You know, being able to live stream and also engage with other content. So, you know, we've maximized all the technology that we have available in the district. We do have some devices in reserve because we do need to have something to hand out when a device breaks, and they do break. There is some damage that has occurred accidentally. There's been some damage that has occurred potentially intentionally. But we do have some limited devices on hand that we can use to, to swap out devices that are not functioning or are experiencing trouble. We did receive the initial order of 60 hotspots. To date, we've given out, we've been able to hand out 34 of them. Sean has been in touch with many of the families that have yet to come and pick up those hotspots. And we work on that daily as well as continuing to get devices out to people that need them. Beyond the devices and the hotspots, there's still been a lot going on in technology. As Chairman Young had mentioned, the power outages that has kind of had a, a large impact on us. Aside from the outage itself, we have a bit of an aged server here at the middle school that from the outage last Wednesday caused a domino effective issues with that server, which caused challenges with getting our different wireless networks up and running. Our network manager, Mike Mills, worked diligently all day that Wednesday to get those networks back up as soon as possible. The outage we just experienced last night, yeah, 2020 has not been kind to Mr. Thompson in that, in that regard with the power outage during his planned virtual open house. But much like everything, when we run into trouble, we just, we drop back, reassess and, and find another way forward. And that's really been the mantra for everything this school year. We don't let the challenges overcome us. We find opportunities to take a step forward and try to make sure we're doing all we can for our students, families, faculty and staff. The power outage at yesterday, Mr. Mills came in and worked till 11:30 last night to get all systems back on board for school today. We did have our external phone lines experience an issue this morning. Mr. Mills worked diligently with our vendor to make sure that we were back up and running with our external phone lines. So, you know, the challenges keep coming, but nothing we can't handle. In addition to that, there's been a lot of work going on in technology as well. And I'd like to recognize the efforts of Katie Goodine and Sean Siciliano. Katie's been working on our, our new online registration system. She'd been working with Aspen for many months now to get that up and running. And we're really excited to announce that we do have a new online, a true online registration system, which is great for many reasons. It increases our efficiency with our data management and streamlines our efforts with account creation in Aspen. Katie has also worked in collaboration with Sean on maximizing a program that we've had in district for a while called Class Link, which is a single sign-on solution. We had aimed to have Class Link really up and running for the start of the year, but it was dependent upon the schedules as they were placed in Aspen for students. And just due to the vast amount of work and changes that needed to be done with scheduling, we weren't able to get Class Link up and running until the, really the Monday evening before school started. And Katie has continued to work diligently on it to integrate all of our digital platforms into Class Link so that our students, faculty and staff only have to sign into Class Link and then they then have access to the programs that the district provides. That also leverages the data in Aspen because through one roster, Class Link pulls data out of Aspen every day and somewhere between 3:00 or 4:00 AM, where it will then automate, automatically update student and faculty accounts as needed. And that's just a huge time saver and increasing our efficiencies. We're also full steam ahead with the, the new high school project. There's a lot of work in technology that's going on with that preparing for internet service at the new high school. Conversations about phone lines, firewalls, all sorts of fun stuff. But it's really exciting to, you know, see that, that new high school really starting to come alive with the systems that are being put into place. We do have a bit of an update on the devices that were ordered back. The last update that we received from our, our vendor was that the expected ship date would be the end of November. The, the one date that was thrown out was November 20th. You know, I hate to be pessimistic, but until the devices are in our possession. Um, you know, I I hate to be pessimistic, but until the devices are in our possession, I'm I'm just gonna continue to, uh, think that they're just not here yet. Um, so hopefully we can get something a little bit more firm from the vendor. It'd be nice to get some tracking numbers or something of the like so that we could, um, know know more concretely when the devices are going to arrive. Once the devices do arrive, it is, uh, all attention focused on getting those up and running. Um, we have to start to also prepare for MCAS, uh, which will be beginning, I believe it is January 14th, 17th, somewhere around there, um, that we will begin MCAS testing at the high school. Um, MCAS testing is expected to move forward as as per our norm, um, with actually some additional testing. Since last spring, we weren't able to test our high school students in English and math, um, that will need to take place in order for kids to, uh, meet the competency determination. So there's a lot of work that's still yet to come in the tech department. Thanks to, um, you know, the convergence of many important factors, that being, uh, the arrival of the new devices, the preparation for MCAS, as well as onboarding our new Middleborough High School. So lots yet to come, um, and we know that we will continue to adjust on the fly from the challenges that I know are still out there within the community as well as within our schools um, regarding technology. And we will continue to work diligently to support all those that are in need. I think I see a question from Mr. Rowe. Uh, if I, if, uh, the chair would like me to address that in terms of the, uh, student registration process.
Go right ahead, Melanie.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, the student registration, uh, the online registration platform is for new students. As well as moving forward, we will be able to do our annual registration process through there. So the updating of emergency contacts, um, the approval, uh, of media release, some updating of some limited health information, as well as acceptance of our internet acceptable use policy. Um, just due to the timing of it, it was challenging to try to roll that out for the start of the year, but we're excited that we now have that in place. Um, it was a a goal that we had been working on for quite a while, so we're excited to see it come come to fruition. Um, and, you know, we will, uh, more formally announce the unveiling of that online platform uh, moving forward, but it is something that is currently available for a new student registration.
I I think I see your okay. Um, thank you so much, Dr. Gates. Uh, it sounds like people have just been putting in Herculean effort to get this all going. Um, I'm I'm really struck by, um, by the the uh, group that you have working for you and I'm hearing all the names, especially from an earlier talk, um, Hutch, uh, Mike Mills, Katie, Sean, um, and of course, I think, uh, I hope everyone understands that the name that's missing there is, uh, Dr. Gates as well, and the amount amount of work you've all put in. So, um, I for one am super thankful that this seems to be going. Um, this crazy new normal seems to be going, and I'm sure it's because of you guys. Um, now, I had a question about the new devices, and I know we're not counting any, uh, um, chickens until they hatch, uh, so to speak, but when we do get those devices in, will the people that are uh, that are currently using their own device, will they get a device or are we gonna look for a natural break in the year to recalibrate that whole thing?
I'd like to do a recalibration, to be honest, because I think there's, uh, a multitude of factors that need to be considered. Um, MCAS, I need to make sure that we are properly provisioned for MCAS. Um, I do have a draft of a plan that I have yet to share with our leadership team that I will be doing at our at our meeting next week. Um, but I I want to make sure that we're prepared for MCAS in district and that we have adequate technology on hand for that. But I also want to make sure that we're addressing the needs of our families. Um, so I'd like to bring the leadership team in the fold on that so that we can make a decision together. You know, many many minds can come up with a a more viable solution that works for all. So I would like the opportunity to seek seek their feedback. Uh, but MCAS is certainly an important factor in that we will need adequate technology in district to support, um, testing. You know, the relying upon students to bring back and forth charged devices on MCAS days um, could present a challenge. So I want to make sure that myself and the team think that through appropriately and then reassess for the remaining technology that we do have. And I also have to be cognizant of the amount of time and demand it's going to take to onboard those nearly 2,500 devices while simultaneously preparing for MCAS and getting the new high school online. Um, so it's it's a tall ask, but not one that we will shirk from whatsoever. But respectfully, I do ask that, uh, further details of the plan will be coming forward once I have an opportunity to vet it with the leadership team.
Great. Thank you.
Melanie and Brian, one of the questions that came up, is there a backup plan for when no internet or Wi-Fi is down, especially due to storms with winter come? You're muted, Brian.
Yeah, I think that will be something that we plan with administration, um, looking forward. And it is something that will be a topic of of discussion amongst the administrative team as to what happens. Um, you know, there's been a lot of districts that are talking about snow days, and and we have not broached this with the school committee yet with regard to if there is a a snow day, is it a remote day for everyone? Um, but that has come up in the past, and we have stayed away from that and called it a snow day because we have a lot of hourly employees in our district, um, who would lose out on a day's wage. Uh, if they were, if we were home, and if we cancel five days and they became remote, that's a week's pay for some of those individuals. So uh, those are some of the things that we have to discuss, I think, as as a negotiation subcommittee, certainly, and as a larger committee, uh, perhaps in a in a session, uh, in the not-too-distant future, um, starting to get a little chilly at night. So uh, when you when you look at that, but I do think that in answer to the question, that that'll be something that will be coming out uh, in information from the elementary, uh, middle and high schools with regard to
And related to that, Brian, too, there was a question about hours of screen time. Um, I'm assuming remotely for, uh, students, especially in the elementary school, um, six hours on a computer screen.
Yeah, well, you know, we we continue to try to structure, uh, the day, uh, as much as we can to mirror the school day. Uh, that was one of our major complaints that we heard from last spring was that there wasn't enough structured time for students and that we're and and students didn't have that feeling that they were somehow in school. We want them to feel like they it's a school day. Um, and it should be structured like a school day. So I don't see us backing off on that. I know teachers are giving people kids breaks. Uh, I know my own daughter gets a break occasionally during the day, and there's time that she can, you know, run it up and down the stairs and get a drink or something like that. So there is, there are times, uh, when there are breaks, and if there's a particular concern about a classroom where somebody is actually, you know, riveted in front of that screen for six hours solid, um, then then that's, they should contact their principal and their teacher and and ask some more questions at that level. I I do think that's that warrants uh, a couple of questions if if that the student is required to sit there for six hours straight. Um, that seems a tall task for for a young person, uh, it's a tall task for any person.
Thank you, Brian. And Melanie, one other question that came in was, um, with regards to the missing devices that we have, is there anything the public can do to help?
I absolutely, I I've had several community members reach out to me with offers of donations of devices. And, um, we've been trying to put, um, those individuals in co- in direct contact with families or or students that we know do have need. Um, because as you know, Chairman Young, anytime we would receive a donation, it would be approved by school committee. And if we receive a device and we need to onboard it for, um, for it being in possession of the district, that, you know, that just be then becomes a bit of a time-consuming task instead of a direct handoff to somebody in the community. It could take two or more weeks for us to receive the device, get the donation approved, onboard the device, and then get it out to someone. So we've been trying to encourage those that that have something that they wish to 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 offer to someone in need. Um, the direct exchange is a a bit more efficient. If you need help trying to find someone to, um, give the device to, please reach out to me, and I will do my best to put you in contact with with, uh, someone that is still in need. I do know that there are still students that need access to a device, and our families are being so super creative in how to support that, as well as our teachers. I know earlier, um, the start of the year, we had, uh, a family at the elementary level that was um, sharing one device amongst two students. And the two te- different teachers that their children had were working in collaboration with each other to schedule, what are we doing our live, our our live interaction so that both students could still actively participate in their classes. So it it the the patience, the support, the collaboration that's going on is a man. But if there are members out in the community that do have some technology that they wish to donate, I think there's several avenues to, um, to get that that technology into someone's hands. You know, Facebook can be a powerful tool in that regard, um, whether it's posting on any of the pages, or as I said, emailing me, and I will, um, work to find a student that is in need and have that as as a direct handoff versus the, uh, a bit of the bureaucracy here and here if we were to accept the donation, then prepare the device to then be issued, um, from the school end. So just to try to save that step for folks and increase the, uh, time at which the device can get in hands, that's probably the best route.
Thank you, Dr. Gates. Any other questions about technology pieces? Seeing no one. Thank you, Dr. Gates. We appreciate all your help, and we obviously appreciate all the hard work of your staff, too.
Uh, yes, with that, Mr. Young, if I may, I would like to just give a public shout out to the team. Um, you know, there's certain names that get mentioned a lot, but there's a lot of people behind the the scenes working really hard. Um, that would be Cindy DiStefano, Earl Geddon, who is our new computer technician here at the middle school, Kate Forish, computer tech at the high school, Katie Goodine, of course, our our, uh, student information expert, um, as well as Mike Mills, Mo Broder, who's a computer technician, and of course, Sean Siciliano, who, uh, I'd literally be lost without. So, thank you all.
Thank you, Dr. Gates.
Mr. Chair, I can continue with my report if I could.
Please go right ahead.
Thank you. Um, we are going to move on now to student enrollment. As promised in the last meeting, I'd give you an update on enrollment. October 1st is sort of a magical date in school enrollment, uh, with is sort of the the watermark, the high watermark of the year in terms of funding for next year. Uh, so it's important that our numbers are accurate. And again, uh, Dr. Gates mentioned Katie Goodine, and Katie Goodine is this one person in the district we really depend on to get us these accurate numbers. So, uh, I believe, I hope that Ann Gagnon dropped the latest enrollment information into your Dropbox. Um, I hope it's in there. I I can, I don't see any nodding heads. Is it, did you get that? Do you have the enrollment piece in there? Okay, I just want to sort of summary, uh, summarize for for folks at home, uh, where we stand. Uh, as you know, we're we're divvied up into cohorts, and then there's also what's called homeschool. So I can give you the latest information on that. In Cohort One, which is our high-risk, high-needs population who are in school full-time, we have 163 students, uh, register. Um, that's five and a half percent of our population. Uh, in Cohort Two, we have 1,146, or about 39% of our population in Cohort Two. In Cohort Three, we have 1,051 students. That's about 36% of our total population. And in Cohort Four, those are the students who are remote only. We have 585 students, uh, or about 20%. So one out of five of our kids has chosen to go fully remote. Uh, so that's an interesting number. I didn't think it would be that high, um, but I'm not surprised either. Uh, and that basically makes a total of 2,945. We also have 35 students who go out of district for different reasons. Um, and then we have nine students who are uh, in the pre-referral, the referral status for preschool, which means they've they register their names, they become sort of students, excuse me, until they're identified, uh, as having some type of special need, and they will enter our program. So those are students that will most likely be with us shortly, but that's just almost a a pre-registration registration. So that gives us a total of 2,989. Now, the question has come up about homeschool in the past. Last year, we had 63 homeschool students in in the Middleborough Public Schools or outside of the Middleborough Public Schools. Because once somebody develops a homeschool and registers for homeschool, they're no longer one of our students, technically. Uh, this year, we have 128. So that number has doubled. So if you look at our numbers and you look at our overall numbers compared to last year, they may be down just a down just a little bit, and I can do a longitudinal for next meeting. Uh, but they're down just a little bit, but that is easily due to the fact that we've gone from 63 homeschool students to 128 registered homeschool students this year. So that's the summary of our enrollment. Um, again, uh, numbers that sometimes surprise you. I was surprised, again, a little bit surprised uh, to see 585, not shocked, but a little bit surprised to see that 585 students, or one out of five. Uh, I certainly understand why folks are are keeping their students remote. Um, but at that point, I will answer, at this point, I'd answer any questions the school committee might have, uh, about trends. Um, but, uh, that pretty much sums it up where exactly we are, because I know that was your question at the last meeting.
Any questions about, uh, enrollment numbers? Mr. Oakley.
I was just curious if if after week one, uh, we saw any sort of change in in parent preference? Um, if if people decided that they wanted to either go back in person or or pull out and go remote if they were one of two or three?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Oakley, we have, uh, let parents know that we asked them to make a decision. And and they need to stay in either one or the other until there are benchmarks, whether it be the end of a term, uh, et cetera. If there's a, uh, some other emergency type of reason, uh, we'll we'll allow it. But other than that, we're asking people who made the choice to either go remote or fully in person, um, to go for at least a semester, if you will. So.
Gotcha. Thank you.
We don't anticipate a lot of movement.
Other questions? Thank you for the enrollment numbers.
See none. I I can move on now to and invite, uh, Sarah Hickey into the meeting, our Director of Business and Finance. There she is. And Sarah is going to talk about, uh, a special town meeting coming up a week from tonight.
Uh, yes, actually, I'm on the agenda talking about, uh, technology updates, so I'm gonna do that first. Uh, we had received a letter from Senator Pacheco's office back in the summer, uh, that, uh, approximately $60,000 was earmarked for the Middleborough Public Schools. I spoke with Mary Wazilek, who is Senator Pacheco's Chief of Staff. Uh, I spoke with her last week, and she explained to me that they now have a process that they know that the money is going to be given out to districts through the Department of Education. So I imagine that this is going to function similar to the Remote Learning Technology Grant that we secured over the summer. Um, that there's money that has been set aside for us, and I'll have to go through the grant process um, in order to have that dispersed to us. The second thing I wanted to talk about was the town meeting next week. Um, we have put in an article for the special town meeting to request additional vehicles. We continue to have more students than we can transport, and this year it is mo- largely because of the reduced number of students that we can put in a vehicle, but we continue to have more students than we have vehicles to put them in. And so we have asked the town manager if uh, the town could consider to give us, uh, the funding for two new ve- two new Ford Transit vehicles in town meeting. Um, so please go to town meeting and and vote favorably for us. The third thing I wanted to mention was that, uh, on September 27th, I, I'm sorry, September 26th, I submitted a reimbursement to Plymouth County, uh, in, uh, for approximately $270,000. I don't know the status of that reimbursement yet. Hopefully, I will have information for you at our next school committee meeting, um, which will happen right before the next submission is due. So we we have put together one submission for for everything from March 13th up until, uh, September 22nd um, that we had already paid for. The process for reimbursement with Plymouth County is it has, we have to be able to produce the checks that have paid for whatever it is that we have been required to purchase because of COVID. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Anyone have any questions? Um, just so everyone knows, the the, this is a a standard piece that we put in to town meetings for the vehicles because we rotate our older vehicles out, but obviously, this is, um, But obviously, this is, we had, we had, we were able to spend some money at the end of last year through our transportation accounts for new vehicles. This is different in the sense that it's helping, hopefully helping us with reducing some of the numbers from outside vendor.
And Mr. Chair, that concludes my report. Good evening.
And so somebody asked about town meeting. Town meeting is in person. It is a reduced number for quorum. The selectmen reduced the number again for this particular town meeting. I will say, everyone did a really nice job at the regular town meeting to make sure that people were separated and socially distanced. And so I know several members of the committee were there. But for those who weren't, it was really well done, especially by Town Clerk's Office and the Police Department. So I would encourage people, if they can, to come, because there are separate rooms in case one overflows. And by overflow, I mean everyone being completely socially distant. So thank you. And thank you, Mr. Lynch, for your report. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, which includes the fundraisers and the meeting minutes and approval warrants.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I would make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Discussion?
Second.
Hearing none. It requires a roll call vote because we're in remote. Mr. Oakley?
Aye.
Mr. Stevens?
Aye.
Ms. Farley? Mr. Rowe?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. It's unanimous. Thank you. The next item that I put on our agenda was the, November ninth is the MAS C Delegate Assembly, of which I am the delegate that you have asked me to do that before. The reason I'm asking, it has been our past practice that the delegate, we don't send delegates to the assembly with preconceived votes. We sort of let the delegate determine the vote for us based upon the information that happens at the meeting. A lot of times, those meetings will include amendments and such. I just wanted to make sure that was the will of the committee. If not, we can bring up those particular pieces at the next meeting. But I wanted to check in with everyone to make sure everyone was still on the same page that way. So open it up for discussion, if any. Mr. Rowe? I'm sorry, Mr. Stevens? Mr. Rowe moved. I thought it was moving quickly.
Yeah, no, I, I think the, I think the way we're doing it is fine. Yeah, I know the stuff changes and you keep us surprised on everything that's going on, so I'm okay with the way it has been done before.
Anyone else? So Ms. Farley, I know you haven't been a part of it, but I hope you got the book to take a look at the amendments. And then you are more than welcome to talk to the delegate and let them know your opinion. That's what most people do, and we have conversations about what happens at the meeting afterwards and let everyone know how the vote went. This year, the vote is virtual, so I will let everyone know how that went. Seems like everyone's in agreement that we just move it along that way. Okay. So with that, does anyone have anything else they want to mention before we move on? Because we've completed our business for the night. Seeing no one, chair wants to take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Go ahead, second.
Second.
It requires a roll call. Mr. Oakley?
Aye.
Mr. Stevens?
Aye.
Ms. Farley?
Aye.
Mr. Rowe? Ms. Janess?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, and we will see everybody in two weeks. Thank you very much and have a great Columbus Day weekend.